Will the town clerk kindly call roll, please?
Counselor Edwards. Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Counselor Ruiz is present. Counselor Medeas?
Here.
Counselor Durfee?
Here.
Counselor Costa?
Yep.
Counselor Bowlin?
Yeah.
Counselor Carroll is delayed. Everyone else, please.
Mr. Bowlin, would you read the consent agenda, please?
Tonight's consent agenda consists of the receipt of the minutes from the following boards and commissions, the art commission, school committee, waste order management. Correspondence received from town of Middletown regarding resolution in opposition to propose legislation concerning distribution of hotel tax. Received from town of Burriville regarding resolution supporting legislation amendments to criminal records check. Received from town of Burriville regarding resolution supporting legislative relating to property held by police departments. Received from the town of Burriville regarding council resolution relating to support of legislation relating to environmental management elimination of MTBE as gasoline additive. Received from conservation commission regarding conference health on future water needs attended by Patricia Sullivan. Received from the Tiverton Stonebridge area improvement task force regarding verification of the establishment of the Stonebridge area improvement task force subcommittee referred to the town solicitor. Received from town of East Greenwich regarding resolution relating to housing project costs. Received from town of East Greenwich regarding resolution related to group home education funding. Received from town of Jamestown regarding resolution relating to non-renewal of insurance for coastal properties. Received from town treasurer regarding revised FYO-8 budget for treasurer's office. Received from the town of Cumberland resolution supporting coalition of communities improving Rhode Island. And received from the Tiverton library board building committee regarding need for a new library. The tax assessor memo regarding update on property value assessments. And our own solicitor, Southern Union Companies notice of presentation of claims against the town of Tiverton.
I'd like to take just the Southern Union Companies notice of presentment off the agenda. Is there any other withdrawals from the agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. I just had a question of the town solicitor with regard to the government's action presenting claims against the town of Tiverton. I know that you have contacted the trust. Has there been any developments on the getting back to us at this time?
There's been nothing official. There has been a further conversation between myself and the general counsel to the trust, but I think the substance of that should wait till executive session.
Okay. Very good. Then we will wait till our executive session. There are no public hearings tonight or board of licensing commissioners, which is unusual, but we move to appointments and resignations. We have a resignation from David V. Crompton from the budget committee. And I will entertain a motion.
Motion to accept with regret.
All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item is the resignation of Michael Fairhurst from the Harbor Coastal Water Management Commission.
Motion to accept with regret.
Second.
All those in favor, that motion, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. We will now move to new business and placing cause. Barbara Pelletier, are you here?
Yes, she are. Hi, my name is Barbara Pelletier. I'm co-chair with Bob Martin of Placing Cause. For the past approximately seven or so years, we've helped out with the animals in town. Financially, if there was a need for once in Saconnet, if you need a medical care and so forth and so on. Lately, since fall, we've been giving $250 a month to pet partners to help with the spaying and neutering of primarily feral cats that some very nice ladies catch and take care of and take care of that. So now that our, the contract is up again for renewal, I just want to urge all of you guys, and you've been inundated, I know, by information from me, but I do want to just remind you and plead that you negotiate the best deal for the animals in town and this time also include the cats that up to now have been overlooked. It is a problem. The other thing that we would highly love to see is that the dogs get more attention and more socializing in how they're kept at Saconnet. And I know that that's probably the only place that is even acceptable for us to use as a venue for the animals because there's no other place in town. We are one of the few towns, by the way, in the state that doesn't have any provision for cats, so that I think we should take that into consideration. And if any money is left over in the town budget, also help it for the spaying and neutering because eventually, when that is done, there will be fewer animals and it will save on the average of 65. It does, according to the SPCA, cost $65 an animal to be, for an animal to be processed, held for a few days or whatever, and then put to sleep. So I think if we can prevent that in the first place and not have that come through our system, it's good. And I think we are making great headways. We have a wonderful new animal control officer and the girls at Saconnet, I think at the bottom, do have the downstairs have the best interest of the animals in their mind. So, thank you. I promise to keep it free.
Well, we are certainly cognizant of the problems that have been brought to our attention and all I can say is we'll try to weave our way and do our best.
Oh, I know, and I just don't want to be too much of a free, but I know that had to come.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you. I guess the next two items can be heard together, the planning board and the town solicitor.
Good evening. Noel Byrd, administrative officer for the planning board. I place this on the agenda primarily for a status, a planning board's status update to you. Very briefly, we had our initial meetings to discuss amendments in late February in response to the council's request that we do so. On March 6th, we finished and were all in agreement on draft amendments to be approved and recommended to the board. At that time, Andy Tice was sitting as our counsel and recommended that we not vote, wait until we had a set of finished findings before us. So we did it by consensus only. And we are anticipating getting those findings for our May 1st meeting. If so, then we will be able to furnish you with a vote and we approved and recommended amendments.
Town solicitor?
Thank you. I also asked that this be on and that the clerk combined it because wanted to keep moving forward and actually need to request some money from the council if we're going to go forward with this. This is a letter from Mary Hutchinson. I think as you recall, a couple of meetings ago, the town clerk provided you with a copy of an advertisement that Middletown had done and a variety of maps. And we understand that we're going to have a fair amount of work here with these maps to do. Jurisdiction is really important. And there's a couple of components, one of which is the map itself, preparing the different maps, and we have a proposal from her. And I apologize for this coming late, but we were working to get it, just got it today. Essentially, she's estimating about $1,500 to $1,800 to preparing the map. She'll work directly with the newspaper to figure out what the best format is to get it to them so that then they can lay it out. In addition to that, we're going to have the cost of mailing out the certified mail. The number of lots she had indicated is about, is 332, but that's actually understating it. That's the number of lots, but one of those lots is Starwoods. So there's actually 100 other names that are on it. It's actually going to be about more like 430 names that would be required to be sent out. I have met with Mr. Robert, the tax assessor, and he's going to, within another week or so, be able to provide data in electronic format, platton lot data, so we can get the address labels and the list. I thought we were going to have to subcontract that out completely, but I don't think we are at this point. I think that can be done with some minimal assistance, probably about $500 worth of paralegal time should be able to turn that around if we, because it will require some title researching. I don't expect, with 440 plats and lots, some of those addresses, they're going to all have to be reviewed and some of them are going to be, need further investigation where there are multiple names and so forth. So in order to be jurisdictionally correct, there's going to have to be some further research of the land evidence records on that. Not certainly on all of 440, but, 430, but there will be some. And then the other issue as far as the money is, I didn't know, the clerk was going to report whether there's money available in her budget to cover the actual advertising cost or whether that was going to require extra funds as well.
I did speak with the newspaper and they stated that the idea of doing an insert wasn't 100% guaranteed because they have some problems with that. But to do a full page, it's $980. To do two, it's $1,860 or whatever, double. So there is going to be a cost advertising, assuming we have to advertise this three times. So that's going to be pretty expensive.
They won't give us a, they won't give us a quantity discount?
No, they wouldn't even give a discount if we use like two p, front and back, as opposed to just front, still just double the amount.
So Andy, what you see is everyone, we do a zoning change in a certain area, you have to notify everyone in there?
If you do a, yes, if you do a specific map change, if you do the whole town, you don't have to.
Yeah.
But if you change the map in a specific area.
Yeah.
You have to notify the people within the area that you're changing.
Yeah.
And a radius around it.
Yeah.
And state law provides that that radius be not less than 200 feet.
Yeah.
And the town can require a radius, which in Tiverton you do.
Yeah.
So when you pick up all the people around that, that is a legal requirement, you have to notify them, as well as a few others. We have to notify the water districts. If any of those radiuses pick up a neighboring town, we have to notify their town council, things like that as well.
Well, let me throw a caveat to this. Instead of doing it piecemeal and going in at the rate we're doing here, maybe we should throw it back to our planner and have him relook at this and maybe we should be, maybe we should be doing another zoning plan review and redoing the whole town and relooking it all over again and coming out something that way and do a whole zoning amendment. We've got highway commercial areas that we should be looking at that probably, you know, that should be changed and no longer that be there. So if that's the case, then maybe we should be going and looking at it that way versus doing it piecemeal the way we are. That's going to end up costing us a fortune one way or another. I'm just, I'm just.
We're actually not doing it piecemeal. That's the thing. We've put together all the changes that deal with the highway commercial and the main road areas, the waterfront and the commercial areas there.
We've still got highway commercial out there that's up on Stafford Road that's still, that's not part of this. That's not included in this.
But your comp plan, I'll let Noel address that, this is the comp plan.
A big driver on the costs for the map changes, because technically, open space is a zoning district and we're trying to, as well as come into compliance with the comp plan update, recognize that there's many small lots that have been purchased and have become open space. For instance, that Stafford Heights, and there's a lot there. And they're small lots, and when you swing that radius, you encounter an awful lot of abutters. If we weren't doing open space, the bill would be a lot less.
But what I'm saying is, instead of going this route, would it be easier to go a zoning rewrite and encompass some of the other things and correct some of the, you know, some of the other things that we have there, such as the highway commercial? You know, I'm looking at some of the zoning.
But the future changes for that will not have as many abutters surrounding it. That's the point of trying.
You know, and encompassing that in there. We've got some highway commercial stuff that's hanging in there that's absolutely useless to us and we're making people keep coming in.
I can assure you, the board won't get to it in the near future. So if you want to go ahead with this, I think you have to bite the bullet. Otherwise, forget it.
You know, I think, Paul, our cost here of making, bringing this, those areas into conformity with the comprehensive plan, we're not, good Lord, I've looked at some of the bills that have come through recently and we're not talking about a huge amount of money here. And I must say, I think that rather than go through another NED proposal in this town, which is extremely costly, I think we should proceed and get this done.
That would be my recommendation. I think, I think this is fairly comprehensive. We are trying to make it cost effective by doing a significant portion of it all at once. And these are the things that are both changed over time as far as the open space and the highway commercial, which really dates back to the last comp plan when it should have been done. These are the most glaring items that should be done. And I think, you know, overall compared to litigation costs, this will not be that much in the long run.
Let me go back and ask, okay. If we were, if we're doing zoning map amendments, what is the problem in basically what Paul's saying, of saying, we're going to, I'm not talking about changing all the dimensional regulations and doing the whole thing we went through, you know, several years ago where we spent a whole year going over, you know, all the changes, but if we do a complete zoning map review, we wouldn't have to notify abutters, am I correct? We would just, if you.
I think it's a zoning map change. We changed the entire map.
No, that's what I'm saying, but if we did this from the perspective of looking at the entire zoning map, I'm not saying that, you know, the ordinance as we did before, and I know what you are saying, Noel, how long it would take to go through the entire, you know, zoning ordinance, you know, for an update as we did. But is there a way to look at this thing with the entire zoning map and eliminate the need for the notice to abutters?
Frankly, given the litigation history, even if, I mean, there's no definition of what is a comprehensive townwide map change. I don't know if we've got that much called for in the comp plan. And given our history, I would want to provide the notice, even if we were doing a far more extensive map change, I would want to provide the notice and this time I wouldn't want to have to litigate that question of what is a townwide map change.
Okay.
And a lot of those, the other part of it too, just, and Mr. Spencer can deal with it more, but a lot of the other issues about the map change are related to the infrastructure questions and the sewer stuff, and that is related to another set of litigation and the contamination issues. So I don't think we're necessarily in a state there to tackle those issues at this time. I think it would delay things a long time.
But, you know, I'm seeing this before us and we spent several months, you know, at the last council, talking about some other zoning changes. They're not even being looked at here. We jumped completely away from that, some of the main road issues, you know, some of the pre-existing non-conforming use issues, you know, and what we're, what we're going away from these and now we've got a whole nother set here. And I'm just seeing if there's some way to incorporate what we're doing into this as a whole package, or we're going to do this section and then we're going to, you know, jump back on board with.
Well, as we, well, the stuff you're dealing with previously of the non-conforming use and stuff are text changes. And when you're doing text changes rather than map changes, you don't have to.
But we talked about text changes and we were kind of told, maybe we should look at this thing from the possibility of map changes.
Right.
So, I mean, I was under the impression that the planner was looking at that situation to see if that could fall into some of these things. And I think that's taken a backseat to some of these. Now, the issues of the, changing the areas to reflect what's happening with open space, once open space has got their hands on a parcel, even if it's listed as an R-15 or an R-30, I mean, it's still going to stay open space. The need to make that change immediately is not something that, you know, and I think they're going to keep acquiring more land in that area. What do we do? Every time they acquire another four or five parcels there, we make another change of what they were to open space? Because that's what basically we're doing here.
No, what we're doing here is waiting and there are a lot of lots that have been made open space.
Yes.
And every so often, you do have to bring that up to date.
Yeah.
It's more than four or five.
You know, obviously, I mean, I'm looking here at, there's 105.
Yeah.
You know, currently.
That's right.
But what I'm saying is, in this, what we're doing here is we have 118 of 124 lots are strict open space issues.
Yeah. I think a good compromise would be hold off on the open space for later because as you just said, those lots have already been purchased either by open space or the nature conservancy or the town. They're not buildable at this point. So that could be a compromise. That would reduce, and I can see Andy's point of view, he wants to clean this ball up too, one fell swoop.
Andy, you were shaking your head.
Well, I.
Not the direction I thought we were going. Maybe it's me.
No, 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 I understand where we're going and I understand some of what we're doing. And I think that, I just would like, I think there's maybe another avenue to take to accomplish the same thing.
No, go ahead, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
Well, no, I, there's sometimes, you don't want to say too much about something and I don't want to put us in any kind of a predicament, but what I'm saying is, I realize that we're not trying to change any one thing.
That's correct.
And that's the thing, so, but we have some other issues I would like to see incorporated. I think the open space, being the fact that it's the 100 and some parcels, the fact of what it's going to take, as you say, to do the advertisement, to show them, notify abutters when you get to that many parcels, if it was being done in a comprehensive map change and you can eliminate that notice and some of those, you know, the $900 a page to start showing all these little parcels in over two or three pages. Is Mr. Spencer here?
Yeah. No, yeah, I think.
Okay, could I, let me just.
Okay, can I just, but I, can I just respond before he, before you put him on the hot seat?
I'm not trying to put him on the hot seat. I just, I want to ask him a simple question about, has he gotten any information on some of those other issues where we were talking about with the non-conforming? And if you've come to any kind of conclusion yet on that, or is it premature?
Well, what I'm doing is looking at that from three perspectives. One, that there are going to be a lot of those that are going to be handled through zoning changes, I think.
Okay.
The other are going to be ones that may be creating another zone, sort of a floating zone, where there's some non-conforming that add to the quality of life or things that you want to keep. The third aspect are going to be the non-conforming that we've sort of seen as detrimental and things that would, we would like to see phased out and aren't part of the comp plan or aren't part of what we want to see. So there's, rather than just write strictly a non-conformity clause or non-conformity ordinance, that's the way I'm approaching that. So that takes a little bit more time, but these are, these are the zoning things that we have, a baseline of information from which to make a decision on now, and I think it's probably appropriate to sort of act on these rather than wait for everything else to be in line.
I understand.
What I was just going to say, the zoning ordinance is not a written in stone, static document. It changes over time just as the comp plan. The state makes you, in fact, every five years, look at your comp plan, see how things have changed and revise, and then you have to change your zoning ordinance with it. We know there's a whole lot of issues of the zoning ordinance, the various sections. Noel has been very diligent about bringing things to your attention where he sees problems and we're trying to correct them as we go along, and I think we will too. And the same thing about the mapping. I mean, one of the things that I'm very excited about is that Chris and I have talked about TDRs, transferable development rights. And with his experience and my experience, I think we might be able to put something together that would work in Tiverton. But they all take time and we're trying to focus on the, on the most, the most glaring issue, as I said, that should have been corrected years ago, let's correct it. Also, as far as what I look as one of the most valuable aspects of this community, is the commitment to the open space, both with the financing mechanism that provides a way so that there is money available and an active land trust and the open space commission, so that when you look at the map at Tiverton, you see how much is forest and green and to keep it there. And is this, is this a belt and suspenders? You know, as you said, once they, you know, once they own it, do we really need to zone it? Yeah, it probably is. But is it worth it? I think it's worth it. I think it's worth it to make sure that the land is truly protected, add an extra level of protection to it, and also to the message it sends to people in the future as they look at the map and see how much of the map is actually zoned open space. Because otherwise, when you look at the map, you don't see who owns the parcel. If you see it zoned open space, you see the community's commitment to the open space.
Can I ask, just ask, the goal of this is the zoning map and ordinance amendments to correct inconsistencies with a comprehensive community plan. Do these things that are listed here, Noel, do these essentially meet, are there other ones as well to get rid of inconsistencies?
Eventually, certainly, as Chris just mentioned, in the comp plan update, we say we want to look at highway commercials, see if it's relevant for the town. We've talked about establishing like a village commercial areas that service nearby residential communities, and I think that's, again, what Chris is referencing. And they take time. But I have to tell you, there's a sense of frustration here because we're looking at the same piece of property that should have been made medium density residential in 2001, and it wasn't. If you want to count the bills for litigation, we have gone through and are still going through, it's enormous compared to that. But that was stopped and we did not get rid of highway commercial. We're asking once again, would you please approve changing from highway commercial to medium density residential for some particular pieces of property?
I think we all understand that. I think we're probably all in agreement on that, but just in terms of why these particular ones at this time, that's just what I was getting at, is the reason these were grouped as being now, are they all, it doesn't seem to be thereof an equal urgency, obviously. One, highway commercial is more.
In the list that I've given you, there are maybe, I think, two that we included because our building official zoning officer requested. And that Article 8 has to do with setting of a fee for zoning certificates, and I think the change was simply to do it by resolution, by council resolution. And there was another dealing with, I think, the, one of the Articles 5.
Down the bottom.
Or Article 6, I forget which one. 18, yeah, 18 was that one, and there was another one that he had suggested. The others are really two ways. One is to clarify some things, but also to be consistent with the update in separating some of our retail business uses. Again, that was one of the things that led to the lawsuits.
I think one of the other things that Paul was mentioning, when you talk about highway I think one of the other things that Paul was mentioning, when you talk about highway commercial and whether or not highway commercial should exist in town. We have another section, I believe, up at the top of the boulevard where Stafford Road is, is a highway commercial.
That's correct.
And, you know, that really doesn't fit highway commercial, especially on the, I guess it would be the...
East side.
East side.
Stafford Road, that is exactly right.
But why isn't that included in this when we're looking at...
Because we were trying to be timely in our response.
Okay, okay, but...
That's, you know, that's what I'm looking at, if we're advertising everything, if we're squeezing in, if that's part of it, to get rid of it.
We, we sent to the council in late 99, our recommendation that were consistent with the then new comprehensive plan, and you rejected our map changes dealing with highway commercial.
Oh, I know, I sat through that.
In May of 2001.
Yep.
And we're trying to correct that. The, that portion of highway commercial up in the northeastern end has never been a real problem, but part of that should be general commercial, part of it should be residential, and I agree with you.
And I'm just looking at that and saying that I didn't see that as a big change, but it's...
There were some real problems because there are lots up there that get frontage off six-rodway and they get frontage off platted but never improved streets. And anybody going into that area has a nightmare to begin with, so there's no urgency for that. That's what I'm trying to...
No, I understand your urgency issue and the nightmare, but, you know, every nightmare, it seems to be somebody can overcome the nightmare somehow and put us back into another nightmare. And, you know, when you make, when you make mistakes, mistakes have been made about not changing the highway commercial, you know, I think if there's, if, all of the highway commercial really needs to have a look at and this would, would have been a good time. I'm not gonna do anything to delay this, Noel, I will tell you, because I do understand the urgency of what you're trying to do. But I didn't think that other highway commercial would have taken a lot to take a look at, you know, to make some changes in this.
It does. You have non-conforming residential uses in the middle of it.
Yeah.
On the east side, and in the middle. And then we have the commercial area up in the northwestern part, well, bordering the Old River on the northwestern side of Canning Boulevard. You have to look at those carefully. You can't just go through it. The, the problem with those streets, six-rodway and a large amount of wetlands, which is the bulk of the area on the west side, prevent developments up there. We've tried to have them, but they have just reduced. And the only people that have come through with meaningful proposals, look at, for residential uses.
Before us is a recognition that this is favorable, that we have to come up with some money. You can cover the advertising?
I'll try.
There is also monies in the planning board budget for advertising.
Okay. Split.
Rosemary doesn't sit in here, so, you'll hear from her, but we do like to hang on to it for emergency usage when the clerk runs out.
We have some hearing board, right, too?
Yes.
That's very good. Now, before us is a request for a public hearing on May 29th.
Well, that's the next question about whether it's May 14th or the 29th, and I think...
I don't think you...
I, we can't do the 14th.
If we hear it on the first...
Yep.
You're not gonna be ready to advertise on the...
This is just before mental time.
On the third?
Well, the question is, we would advertise, we would actually start the advertise, since the planning board has already looked at it and they've voted verbally that they're in favor of it, it's a matter of getting the formal thing, we were gonna start the advertising before the vote.
Motion to advertise for a public hearing for the earliest convenient date, meaning that you guys are gonna figure out when you put it together and when you can get the advertisements done to create it, and it'll be at our meeting following that.
He has a different date than I have.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think, may, the other problem, you've got the financial town meeting on the 16th. Am I correct that you wouldn't want this on the 14th, right before the financial town meeting?
Okay, probably isn't gonna be able to get done for the 14th, but what I'm saying is, I don't wanna push you to say that it has to be at that last meeting in May, it may go to the first meeting in June.
Okay.
And that's what I'm saying about the convenience is, when, when the...
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries, yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chase.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tom Chase. I'm here requesting to improve eight-rodway from East Road to approximately Bogomash Road to create some hiking trails and mountain biking trails. Also, basically a multi-use trail for recreation and education.
I guess, Mr. Chase, you are aware of the memorandum that the town council received from the open space commission?
I know that there is a memorandum, but I haven't read it.
I see. Well, you can get a copy of it from the, from the, I'm sure it's right there. I think we have read your request and I believe we've read the request from our open space commission. I don't know whether, Mr. Plunkett, you wish to respond?
Good evening, I'm Gary Plunkett, 266 Indian Point Road, co-chair of the Tiverton Open Space Commission. And Mr. Chase and I have discussed this briefly before, and I've communicated with him our concerns, which are expressed in the memo that you have before you. Basic problem here is that this roadway, eight-rodway, was laid out in 1681, and it is not a roadway today for very good reasons. Those reasons being that it goes through an extensive swampland area, not, not through its entire length, but significant areas of swamp that basically are not improvable in terms of creating pathways and so on. The other situation that precludes a, an improvement at this point is the fact that to go around those wetland areas would encroach on private properties. The open space commission or the town does own a few, a few of the parcels. Nature Conservancy owns some of the parcels, and the land trust has a parcel in that vicinity throughout that whole area. South of Lafayette Road, of course, is Whedonwood Woods, and there's already trails down there with established uses that have been approved by town ordinance. So, I think it's premature to start thinking about using an area up there that is not really owned by the town other than the historical legal right of way that goes up through there, the location of which is not really surveyed, and it would be literally tens of thousands of dollars to get it surveyed, so we'd know where eight-rodway precisely goes. And layered on top of that is the fact that we do know for a fact from some of the surveys that have been done on parcels up there, that eight-rodway does transcend a significant wetland. So, basically, it's a non-starter as far as RV points.
Okay. The council ready for a motion on this?
I could say one other thing.
Yes.
I did supply you with a telephone map that is approximately where eight-rodway is, between the town plot maps, which I put together, and the telephone maps that I did put together. A large section north of Lafayette Road is not in wetlands. There, there are some areas that either skirt wetlands or come close to or go directly into wetlands, and I agree with Mr. Plunkett on that. If they cannot be avoided, then we would stop. But I have not even walked beyond Lafayette Road because I know that there are some places in there that are privately owned, and I don't want to go walking across somebody's property that, where I don't belong. So, the eight-rodway that's owned by the town should be walked and sort of an informal survey. We don't need to spend $10,000, we don't need to spend $100, a walk in the woods would suffice. And a lot of eight-rodway is marked off by stone walls, basically 132 feet apart, they're fairly easy to find, and what is in there, I'm not exactly sure. But the reason I'm here is to start with the town council and say, would you at least consider? This is no cost to the town. I have volunteers that if it ever works out, we can go in there and build the trails and manage, maintain the trails.
I guess my own feeling, Mr. Chase, is that there's no such thing as an informal survey. Once you get into a dispute, it is who has the rights and what was your survey, and we have had...
No, but when I say an informal survey, I'm talking about a walk in the woods to see where we are. And I have had the, like Mr. Plunkett said, I have had conversations with him, and I am getting a group together of, especially the people that are cyclists like myself, you know, love the woods, love the open space, think the open space is a great, great place to, to go and play, walk, watch the birds, stay quiet, and think the open space would gotta break out, and one of the reasons why we're trying to join them in doing some volunteer work.
Can I just say something?
Yes.
My name is Trish Sylvester, Albertson, the Tiverton Land Trust, and I agree thoroughly with Mr. Plunkett that the nature conservancy...
You need to come forward, use the mic, please.
Or I sit at the table and use the mic.
The open space commission, the nature conservancy, and the land trust have done a lot of work in this area. It's a very important, unfragmented forest, which is why we're so interested in it. All of the organizations who have purchased property recently in that area are working hard on a management plan, which really is trying to try to limit public access. There will be some trails eventually that go through that area, but I would very much be against any kind of intrusion into this area at that, at this point, because we are working on it with a plan that would not include casual biking and meandering, walking through the woods at this point. So, I would, I would urge you not to open eight-rodway at this point to, to that kind of use. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question? Why would this area not be open to the public?
Well, because right now, it's a combination of still private lands...
When you say private, you mean...
Some of the land that's is still private, some of it is owned by the nature conservancy, the open space commission, and the land trust.
And others, right?
And then a lot of it, the rest of it, is still private. So, what we're trying to do is acquire more land in that area and then to have an overall management plan, which would preserve, it's a very important, unfragmented forest at this point. And that's one of the reasons why we're interested in preserving that area, because of the wildlife that lives there, et cetera. So, we don't want sort of casual walks in the woods that would destroy that kind of integrity of that forest.
But Whedonwood Woods is open to...
Whedonwood Woods and Pardon Gray Preserve are open to the public. Acres and acres and acres of land that are open to bike, bicycle, motor, not motorbikes, excuse me, but cyclists, walkers, birders, photographers, et cetera. So, there's plenty of land that's open to motor, not to motor, I keep saying that, to bikers at this point.
But then that, but then the land between East Road and Lafayette would basically, most of it, fall within those areas of land.
Yes, and that's totally open to the public at this point because it's part of Whedonwood Woods and Pardon Gray Preserve.
You know, Mr. Chase, what I would say to you is, you should probably maybe limit this at this time and try to work with some of these groups to do something between East Road and Lafayette.
And between the time that I put the request in, Mr. Plunkett and I have had a couple of conversations, that actually we're gonna have another one within a couple of days, to get, one of the things that started all this was the, the plan of who can use what. And my concern basically is being excluded from the plan because I enjoy the open space so much that, instead of being excluded from the plan, we actually started a group of volunteers that were, will be working along for the open space committee. Basically, trail maintenance, trail building, and any kind of volunteer work we can do, picking up litter.
But I'm saying that, at the current time, the, the entrance on East Road to Whedonwood Woods, I think that then goes through areas around Pardon Gray, which just about end at Lafayette.
Yes.
So, there's an area that, you know, I don't think we're gonna have a lot of dispute because of what's allowed in those areas. We have some other concerns that I think we're gonna take a lot more investigation on the eight-rodway from Lafayette to Bogomash. So, I think that, you know, maybe your concentration should be in that one area for now, and I think sometimes in developing those kinds of partnerships, as you're talking about with open space and some of these other ones, your actions and your group's activity, you know, may lend these other people to a greater acceptance of what you're trying to do when they see what you do in that area. So, I would tell you, from my opinion, that I think that's a good way to start.
Yeah, and that's sort of a two-tiered approach to help and maybe expand. But right now, the expansion, that's a ways down the road, but the volunteer help is...
I think the issue...
What this all started out is...
From Lafayette Road to Bogomash is not something that we could approve.
I think it needs, I think it needs to be looked at, but again, I agree with, I agree with a lot of assessments. This is not a straight road, this is not something that you can, you know, clearly say, this is where it is and, you know, this is the issue. Well, we have some other issues I think we need to discuss, you know, I would wanna discuss before we opened it up, to say, go ahead and with this thing, but I think you have the ability to take a half of that, what you're trying to do, and show somebody what you can do. And I think that would go a long way to, to...
Smooth agree.
You know?
I agree.
Okay, and that's what I would tell you to start with.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay.
Where in him?
Yeah.
Okay. You can get together with Mr. Plunkett.
Yep.
All right.
Okay.
Moving on, Mr. DeBart.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Okay.
I think you need a motion to, to deal with the item one way or the other, perhaps you want a motion to table it. Motion to table.
Second. All those in favor of the motion to table? Okay, Mr. Basset.
Mark Basset, Fairwood Drive, I'm representing the registrar for the Tiverton Youth Soccer. Come before the board to, I'm sorry, the council, to request the use of Town Farm for the British Soccer Camp weeks of August, or July 30th through the August 3rd.
Now, in presence, I see there's some recommendations by the Recreation Commission. I guess they, they looked favor upon it with a couple of recommendations. I guess they, they just had some concern about making sure that there was some shading available for the...
Yeah, they're supplying water and tents.
And, you know, and shading and that, that there'd be someone available if, you know, if someone got hurt or something like that, I guess, you know, whether you have, you know, someone available.
Their staff is CPR trained, first responder.
And, and that's gonna be run by, by the Tiverton Youth Soccer?
They're sponsoring it, but the British Soccer Camp, we bring them in, and they're the actual coaches and the training people.
Have you held this affair at that location before?
Yeah, last year.
Because I noticed in some of the literature... Because I noticed in some of the literature here that this is a profit-making organization.
That's why I'm here. The Rec Commission, because it's for profit, the Rec Commission recommended that we come before the council for permission.
What was their recommendation on the basic concept? Is Mr. Cook here?
Can't hide.
Did you hear my question, Mr. Cook?
Yes. We have, we have always supported the camp. They've held it now actually, last three or four years. But the Recreation Commission, we do not, we will not approve a group that comes in for profit. We send them here, so that you people have the final say. But we do recommend, we did, you know, some recommendations as far as, you know, a tent or something for some shading, make sure there's water, make sure there's, the medical staff is available. But other than that, we don't really have a, you know, we don't have a problem. They know they're responsible for the field, any damages, we just--
Do we have a form of agreement with nonprofits with regard to insurance and--
All our nonprofits carry insurance that use the field currently.
And do we receive insurance certificates naming the town as additional insured?
I don't know that, but I can find out for you. No, this is the other groups.
That's something we should have in certificates and--
I can check on that, because I know all the other groups that do use it are so, are they all, all carrying insurance.
Yes, it's a question of whether the town is an additional insured under those policies.
I'll find out.
We used to get them when I was town clerk. We did get them. But we also need something that indemnifies us, indemnifies for many legal sort of damage.
I almost think we should have a form, one-page sort of contract with nonprofits, sort of outlining their responsibilities.
We actually did this a while ago in regard to the use of town buildings. And in fact, there's a special program through the inter-local trust where if you're using it for a short term, they have a very affordable, you actually can buy the insurance right from them for the particular event.
But that's for a nonprofit.
I'm not sure if it's limited to nonprofits or not. I don't remember. I remember we came before it, what was, what was needed was a question, basically some decisions about what buildings were going to be used, what hours, what limitations, and so forth. I think we can, that's one of those things that kind of came before us, got addressed, and then slipped by the wayside as we dealt with various litigation and more pressing matters. But we can, we can revive that and bring it back and move forward with it, hopefully.
I think that'd be a good idea, Tracy.
Jack, could we get you back up? You shouldn't have walked away so soon. Oh, when the item's over, we'll be done with you.
Yes, sir.
What was it that Recreation wanted to, was there anything Recreation was looking to get for Recreation in regard to letting this outside organization? There was not.
The only, the only stipulation is any damage to the field, it'll be repaired and it'll get a bill for it.
What's this, about all structures will receive a coat of paint this year, including?
That's not this group.
Oh, okay.
That's all the other groups that--
I don't know. I think a suggestion should be to have Mr. Solicitor draft a, you know, a short agreement, which we can use as a form when other groups come before us.
In the meantime, I'll make a motion that we approve the requests for the soccer camp.
Subject to?
Subject to--
The execution.
The execution of a mutual agreement, mutually agreed to agreement.
Yes? Is parking and traffic control going to be addressed?
You know, they drop off of that. That's, they drop off the kids at that. That's, that's Rosemary, just not to get off on it. My son attended one a couple of years ago over in Somerset. All they do is drop the kids off for the day and they come back and pick them up later on. That's all that is.
Okay, because there has been parking issues.
Yeah, that's, 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 that's a drop-off thing, where they, they, they actually do soccer camp things for the kids for the day and the parents come pick them up.
As, as an amendment to the motion, I'll also include there that it be brought before Police Department for recommendations on what they feel might be needed. And I think that should be part of the approval. That'll address the concerns Rosemary has about traffic or whatever.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. Mr. Phillips.
I made the motion. I made the motion on--
Seconded it.
Yeah.
I seconded it, what the heck? That works.
Are you Mr. Phillips?
Pleasant View Terrace.
Boy, we do have your memorandum, but maybe you could just say a few words in supplement there.
It's my understanding from, from having met with Mr. Berg and gone over some of, some of the maps, and also having grown up on Robert Gray and Terry Lane, when, you know, when Lepus really developed all that land there, what was, what was Pleasant View Terrace at one time connected Bellevue Avenue to Colonial when Colonial dead-ended. It's my understanding that in the, in the '70s, although I'm not exactly specific with the date, that was the northerly, the northerly boundary of what was Pleasant View Terrace was, was sold and was developed. So now there's, there's kind of an odd piece that's, that's left between, between lots 26 and 27, that, that my neighbors and I, we're both relatively new homeowners. But when we, when we purchased the properties, it was, you know, it was commonly thought between us that, that our boundary existed at the middle of, you know, what we thought of as our driveway, but subsequently what we've come to find out is actually the remnants of Pleasant View Terrace. I don't know if I've said more than I need to or, or less.
Mr. Phillips came down and asked me--
Yes?
My suggestion, after looking into it a little bit, was to submit this agenda request. I looked at the original approved, recorded plan of Mr. Lepus, and I, I have a, I attached a photograph of a portion of that plan, so you could see the original layout was as connecting roads. And then the assessor map shows it as paved, not a street, but just this leftover connecting piece still hanging there with some rights of way. On the original plan, there was one opposite, not exactly opposite, but a similar road. And some time ago, and that's, I think, 21A on the assessor map. It's a tiny little lot that goes no place. That piece that was a platted street was removed by means of quitclaim deeds by The Simpsons for the rights of way and by the abutter on one side of it, all done by quitclaim deeds. I thought it'd probably be more appropriate to have the council give up any rights to that little piece. And I provided, although we didn't have a chance to discuss it, I provided some of the backup to Mr. Tights, so he could, you know, speak to it, because I knew the council was going to ask him.
One map shows that little piece of property between lots 27 and 28, and the other one between 26 and 27. Is that a problem?
The number of the lots that, of the Lepus approved plan are different from the number of the lots on the assessor's map, and I tried to pencil in the correct pieces.
This one here?
The one between 27 and 28.
Okay, but the request is between 26 and 27.
It's the significance of the first map that I think has people puzzled.
Over here. This is, when you get to this map here--
The recorded?
See, this is 26, 27.
Could you just maybe come up so we could, I can see it on the, on the second of these.
Bellevue. Yeah. See here, look, you put it here, 26, 27.
I don't know.
But this is the period, the piece we're talking about?
This has disappeared on the assessor map by virtue of these quitclaim deeds.
Okay. It was clear on this, on this--
Well, it didn't, it didn't disappear. Right over here, it shows it is, oh, 21A, okay, it shows it has a lot. But a quitclaim deed to take incipiently dedicated land, you can't--
I don't know, that's up to Mr. Tights to advise.
You're talking about 21A. I mean, I think that's an issue for another day.
Yeah.
People cannot, just because people deed it to each other--
Yeah.
And even if the assessor gives it a lot number, that doesn't mean it's become a private lot if it was an accepted public street, which is what it was by virtue of the Pleasant View Terrace plaque. But we're dealing with this one now on this side. And I did talk with the gentleman, and I, I think that if you, if you're inclined to go forward with it, it needs, it needs a petition for abandonment. With notice served on the abutters, which essentially are him and his neighbor and the properties behind them that would otherwise have a right of access to it, a public hearing with three weeks' worth of advertising--
Right.
And then it can be formally abandoned.
My question is, with all, and not to put a damper on anything, with all the water issues and everything else, do we, would we ever possibly need that to put a drain pipe through there for anything? And that's, that's the only question I have with, with all the issues--
It can't go through.
Private property on the other side.
On the other side, would anybody ever look to grant their neighbor an easement to run a pipe through there because of where we have people? Is there any water issues in that area where we've got people pumping water? That is my first question. That is my first question, where we've had people go on the court for pumping water in the streets. Is there a water issue in there where we would possibly be looking that someone on the other side would be granting an easement through that property to run a drain through there?
I think the water issue there is coming from Ford Farm onto Bellevue.
That's, that's, that's my first question. That would be my first question. You know, we've seen nothing but water problems throughout that neighborhood. That would be my first question. Before, I would be looking, you know, not that, I have nothing against merging it, because I'm a firm believer, if there's nothing we have to do with that land, I fairly believe in giving it to the abutters. But before I would do that, my recommendation would be is to send it to the, to the highway director and let him look at it to see if there would ever be a need that we would have to run, you know, possibly a line through there that we would, you know, that, to possibly do a catch basin or something because of water in that area.
What's your reasoning for seeking the abandonment?
There's a, yeah, thank you. There's a, there's a, we have an existing three-season room that really, that now abuts, literally within four inches, abuts what was, I say what was Pleasant View Terrace. We are, we're going to, we're going to expand that a little bit, and we really want to push it out another four inches. But it's my understanding that if we take that down, we can't, we can't necessarily put something back up, because we need the appropriate side setback.
You don't have to set back.
Yeah. The ultimate plan would be to, by the town giving that up, the two lots would merge, and that would--
Give him a side, we give him a side boundary.
Because I'm, this shows here, not only the, not only the 20-foot or 30-foot, I think, on that side--
The 10-foot.
30-foot, but a 10-foot, so that would make that 50, a 50-foot strip. That, no way in hell is 50-foot now.
No.
It's 20 plus 10 on either side.
Oh, is it 20 or 30 on that side? Is it 20, okay. It's 40, right, 40-foot, and it's, it's, looks like a driveway.
There's something, you know, there's a, when we bought, when we bought the, when we bought the house, there's, as I say, there's an existing, there's an existing three-season room that's on that 10-foot strip of land on the, on what is the westerly side of what was Pleasant View Terrace.
Right, Gareth was concerned about the property line per se, being too close for a side yard setback, and that's what started this. By the way, I would also suggest that the petitioner bear the cost of the advertisement.
Yeah, he would have, yeah.
But I think it's a good, good point to, to get from Mr. Webster--
That's my only concern, if, if--
If you need it, we can always put that easement in for the town.
Completely open to that. As I say, what, you know, really all that, all that we're looking to--
Just to cover us.
All that we're looking to put up will really, in essence, just cover the footprint that, that exists. We're not, we're not really looking to expand on that.
Mr. Solicitor?
Yeah, I just, I think Counsel Carol, I mean, I would expect that any street abandonment would be referred to the Director of Public Works, and that's the point of going to the next step, and also the point of having the advertisement and the public hearing, so that if there's an issue in the neighborhood, that people do feel it serves some use, they have some right to it, that's when they would come to that public hearing to be heard for just those reasons. And I'm not taking a position one way or the other. I'm just, I, I think my understanding was this gentleman, before going to the considerable expense of a survey, which would be needed for the advertisement, as well as the advertisement itself, was looking for some indication from the council as to whether they'd be receptive or not, so that if you were, if you were clearly hostile to it, he wouldn't have to spend any more money on it to get a no.
Oh, no, I wouldn't be hostile to it. I would just be--
Maybe what we should do is just continue this. I don't think, I haven't sensed any hostility from the council. And maybe continue this till our next--
It's a wonderful turnaround at the bottom of Bellevue. I'm being honest with you, it's a dead-end street, and when traffic goes down there, it's the only place to turn around, that lower end of Bellevue.
I make a motion, I make a motion, we refer this to the highway, the highway director to, to--
Report back at our next meeting.
To report back in the next meeting.
Which is the 26th, 23rd, 23rd. Thank you, Gareth.
And let us know what he thinks, and we'll take it from there.
Motion to continue to the next meeting.
There is a second.
I'd just like to speak, I'm actually the neighbor that abuts the property, which is 112 Bellevue Avenue, which I believe is plot 27. And when we bought the house and it was this, they did a traffic search and assessment, I was finding a question that probably would have already been used to both properties, and that was the documentation that I had gotten from my lawyer. Not to say that, you know, I'm a mortgage company lawyer, can't make a mistake, but the seller of the property, Bob Allen, and his wife, you know, led us to believe it was already used. Is there any way to look into that, to see if there's maybe an error on the--
If you have some, if you have some documentation, you know--
I don't have a copy of the plot plan, I just have listed that when we bought the house, it was three plots of land, lot 28, 29.
Without having probably a full boundary survey, you probably really wouldn't know, because they could say that you own lots A, B, and C, but without a full boundary survey, you probably really wouldn't know where A, B, and C physically are.
Yeah, well, with the, with the third piece being 10-foot strip--
It may not--
If I may? I mean, if you can find something that provides evidence that it was previously abandoned or conveyed, then by all means, bring that forward, and you don't have to go through the abandonment. If a, if a prior council abandoned it or gave an easement over it, then you don't have to worry about it.
Well, if you, if you may have something that was in your deed--
The records now indicate that it's, that it's still a street. So, but if you have something to the contrary, including, you know, if in your deed there's some reference to a particular council meeting or something like that, you can then go to those minutes and look it up and see, you know. We're not saying it is, we're just saying, on the face of it, it's a public street. It certainly, it's not a big deal. Public streets get abandoned all the time when they don't serve a public purpose. If there is no public purpose for this, there's no big deal in abandoning it. If you have some other title document, you know, you should look it up and find out if, maybe you don't need to go through all this.
Okay.
Thank you.
So just a single, single question, should I, should I put in a request to be on the agenda?
No, no, it may continue.
If the motion is to continue it, which will automatically bring it up.
It'll be automatically on.
Is there a second?
Our trustee town clerk--
Second.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Motion, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Board of Kansas serves. Board of Canes Surs. Mr. Rego.
Thank you, Madam President. Do you have a member, Andrew? We have taken a position with regard to special elections for our charter review commission to look at the financial town meeting. And we think the town would be better served if this matter was settled at a general election as opposed to a special election. Right now, we're being told by the Board of Elections that if we do have a special election, they're going to charge us $350 for each eagle that we need. We'll need eight of them. And they're going to charge us 35 cents for each ballot and we're going to estimate 3,000 ballots. Plus the cost of the poll workers and we have to schedule, try to get the school department to let us use the gymnasium so we can consolidate polling places. We would like to get six, seven, and eight in the gymnasium. Well, we may not be able to do that if they have something scheduled for that particular part of the school, high school.
Did you say 30 cents per ballot?
35 cents a ballot to print them up. That's what they're going to charge us.
Is this new?
This is, I think it's fairly new because we've never had this problem before. We've had special elections and we've never heard, I don't think we've ever been hit with $350 for each, each eagle before, right, Hannibal?
No, we never have.
No, this is something new. I suppose the state's having so many budget problems, you know, they're trying to scrounge up all the money they can get.
Trying to scour voting, couldn't they?
Yeah, and so anyway, unless the, unless the council has this, has a sense of urgency about this particular issue is, you know, having this charter review commission onboard as soon as possible to review the financial town meeting, it's our recommendation that we go to, we, we hold off and go to the general election with it. That way, the town doesn't have to bear the burden of the cost of all this. We get the eagles for free, we get the ballots for free, if you know what I mean, compared to the special election stuff.
I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to have the town administrator draft a letter to Amaral, Loughlin, and Philag.
And, and what's the, my senator's name?
Gibbs.
Gibbs, and Gibbs, you know, our representation in the State House. And see if there's anything they can do to put some pressure on the Board of Elections in terms of these fees that they're charging or maybe put some legislation to stop them from charging fees like this for elections. I think just hampers town's ability to be able to conduct their normal business, anybody who does have a charter and needs to do things in between. $350 an eagle, 35 cents a ballot, I mean, you know.
You're defeating democracy.
Well, I have to, I have to agree with you. I mean, you know, I always said, if you don't come out and vote, sooner or later they'll find a way to take it away from you. Why find a new way? Just keep charging you more money so you don't have enough money to conduct an election.
Well, I think that's a good idea, so why don't you make a move?
I did make a motion.
Why don't you make a move?
Sean, why don't you make it from the clerk?
Okay, I'll make it from, okay, and then, very, very good. I, I don't mind. Well, once the clerk is saying, give it to me instead of him, that's fine. I'll amend my motion to say, have, have the clerk. I never send you anything. I always send it through, we send it through the administrator as procedure.
The motion has been made to have the clerk follow through on this with a letter to our legislative representation. And there's a second to the motion.
Yep.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Wow. Okay, well, may I continue with regard to the general election versus the special election? If we get past that? And this involves voter turnout. When we have a general election here in Tiverton, we have a very good turnout, around 65 percent. When we have a special election, we're lucky if we can get 20 percent, about 3 percent. So, you know, in all fairness to the town, it's our charter. I think we need to get as many voters elected as possible to make that decision.
What we normally do though.
I can understand.
But Jim, Jim.
I agree with you on that, but the voters were very specific. They wanted to have this put to a special charter review commission and they, they didn't say that they wanted to have it put off for another two years. So, I mean, I think the longer we delay this, the longer we're actually stymying the will of voters.
But Jay, my thought on this is, I have no problem, and I've stated it before, in electing a charter review committee at a special election, because we wish to put the items that they are recommending in a general election where we have that vote, where the majority of people are going to come out and vote on that, not.
Not to elect the, the, not to elect the charter review committee.
You know, the other issue we have.
Which, that's why, that's why my motion, Jay, to see if we can get some of these expenses waived or somehow beat that so we can move on with what we're trying to do.
Totally agree.
The other issue we have is, is this a, a one proposal for a charter commission or are there others?
Madam Chairman, I would hope that it is not. I think if we have a charter review commission, it ought to listen to the public's wishes. If there are other articles in the charter that need amending and the charter commission recommended to the council, we shouldn't allow that to happen.
What we do by holding, by electing a charter review commission and allowing them to review the entire charter is we do, by doing that, delay the next election of a charter review commission for five years because our charter says, I believe it's every five years that we elect one. If we elect one earlier than that, it delays or puts the next one off. So I, I think we don't have to do it as a one issue. We can use it as, we'd be, we'd be three years out instead of five years out, so it's, you know, delays the next one for two.
Excuse me, just a reminder that in the 2004 general election, there were some 34 charter questions that were going to be on the ballot. And because of some violation of open meeting laws, the Board of Cameras ruled that those questions would be taken off the general election ballot and we had a special election along with the school ballot. You know, what I'm trying to say here is, if we look at the whole charter, chances are reasonably good we're going to saturate the ballot at a presidential election. And this is the time when you don't want the voters to pencil whip the ballot just to get it done. If the town is going to spend money and send out mailings like it's done in the past with the charter, explaining what these changes are about and what the impact each one would have on, which position they might want to take, if the town is willing to do that and spend that kind of money, then I say, okay, let's go with the general election.
You're going, you're going ahead of what the charter review commission.
Well, no, I'm just, what I'm trying to do, what I'm trying to do here, because Mr. Bowler just said that he favors the question being on a general election ballot. And if we open the whole charter up, if we open the charter up, if we go above and beyond the financial town meeting, and that's your call, no problem, but if we do that, chances are reasonably good you're going to have 34, 35, 36 questions on the ballot and it's going to saturate the ballot.
Jim, but, but Jim, you know, you make one argument that says we shouldn't have this at a, at a special election because we don't get a turnout. And you make the other argument, we can't put them on a regular election because, because now you're telling me we're going to delay to 2010, so we wait for a non-presidential election? I don't think those are.
With all due, with all due respect, Jim, if, if we waited till the general election to elect the charter review committee, once they're elected, then we're going to wait another two years or then we have a special election to have the charter review questions elect, election to, on those?
Well, we had, we had a special election.
Then have just a 3 percent turnout to do those?
We had a special election on the last, on the last.
I think it's either six of one, you know, either way, I.
And we had like 2,300 voters turn out for the special election.
I appreciate you considering.
We'll have some more discussion about this, but let's move on, let's get the letter out.
See what happens.
Get a response.
Okay.
Appreciate that, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're very mindful of that so far.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, now, Brian had a matter on the agenda and so I will entertain a motion that with regard to the workshops, a couple of matters with regard to wind, so. So I will entertain a motion that this be added to the, as more information.
So moved.
Thank you. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Go ahead.
Just a follow-up to our previous discussion, just to see if the county is interested in having a couple of representatives at the April 19th and 20th Wind Power Conference, Roger Williams. One of the, I talked to Terrace Puglides, who's the gentleman, who's the director of the Wind Power Rhode Island Project, and he was expressing an interest and hoping that he would be there both to gather information but also maybe provide some information in where the town is in the process of exploring wind power. So if there was some, I didn't know if he needed a call or if this was just something that.
Yeah, it was a Friday morning session that I was hoping to attend. I'd love to have company.
She wants pleasant company, Paul. She wants pleasant company, not you.
It comes with lunch.
I like it, no. You know, I will not be.
I, I will let, I can't let you know now, but I will let you know in a few days.
Yeah, I personally would like to attend.
I'd like to, but I will not be, yeah.
Okay. How's that for pleasant company?
How's that?
That sounds good.
Me and me too.
Okay.
Just, and the second part of that was to say, we'd talked about possibly having Mr. Puglides come on the 30th at our workshop to make a presentation on wind power. It's an introductory kind of thing. He'd expressed a willingness to come if he's available on that day. I just wanted to know whether we, there would be an interest in having him come that night to make his presentation.
I would say absolutely.
Yeah, the more information we have there.
What time?
There's also a fellow in Portsmouth by the name of Gary Gump, of all things, who has quite a bit of knowledge.
No, we're dealing with all, checking for some abs, also, first of all, they have the wind tower already set up.
Well, maybe we, we'll start with this fellow.
You want to have him come in for seven? Because we have other things that you want to have him come in for seven or coming later?
Why don't, why don't we do the seven and get him out of the way and then we'll move on to our other agenda? Because when we invite a guest, we might as well not make him sit through our torture of a workshop.
I'll invite him.
Because we have Shore Row.
We have to be there.
And we have another item.
Two items. All right, but he's going to be first at seven.
That's for April 30th, right? I will not be here on the 30th.
We will brief you on wind power.
Thank you. I would love to be here.
We will use a minimum of wind.
Yes. You might want to know that we're already paying for this wind power, by the way. If you read today's Providence Journal and look at your electric bill, you're now being charged, at one time it was voluntary, no more, now it's mandatory. So we can thank our legislature, whoever's responsible for this, and we can pay a little bit more to our electric bill and our gas bill and whatever.
Moving on.
Madam President, I've had a request that the, under executive session, an item be removed.
We haven't gotten to that point yet.
Well, I'm sorry. The town administrator, Pat Sullivan, has, is serving as, would you like to make your announcement, Miss Sullivan?
I'm Pat Sullivan from the Tiverton Conservation Commission, and I did send this information to Mr. Steckman to share it with all of you. Basically, you have it already in people in the audience, but especially people in the television audience, to remind you all that April cleanup week in Tiverton is coming. It starts on Saturday, the 21st, and it runs through Sunday, the 29th. It's an annual event, as you all know, sponsored by the Tiverton Garden Club. And it becomes more and more important that as many people in our community as can get involved in some activities during that week. The cleanup materials are available for everyone at Essex Library. There are sign-up charts. I think one, one is in the library, one is at Coastal Roasters, and I think there is one here. You need not sign up, however. The public needs not to sign up. You can if you want to, but it's sufficient that you just choose a place in Tiverton that you feel needs attention and clean it up. And so that's the message to everyone here and people in the audience. And thank you. And by the way, the gentleman from Portsmouth, Gary.
Gary Gump.
Yes, he is also very expert in, in tidal energy. So that he would, he has a lot of information to share with Tiverton eventually about the possibility of the basin and using energy in that, in that regard. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. So the town council, town solicitor?
Nothing except executive session.
Okay.
Madam President, motion to enter into executive session under 42465A1, discussion of personnel, police chief notice sent.
All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Enter remain in executive session under 42465A2 litigation.
All the, all those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand.
Was the last one just drawn?
Yes.
Okay, we are in executive session.